Any questions?
So this is going to be twenty-one dash zero eight zero.
Yes.
Trustees, would you like to make a motion with that?
I'm making a motion to adopt resolution zero dash eight oh.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion on this? We'll call the soldiers.
Justin McGuire.
Yes.
Justin Mann.
Yeah.
Justin McLaughlin.
Yes.
So all those people were being assigned tonight, you got their ID cards here, is that something you're gonna?
I have this, I guess. I'm doing our, um, sitting at the county, and then go ahead with the button there, and I'll have this numbers in the caption.
Does anything on this need to be initially addressed, or should we issue?
Just in here. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes resolutions for this evening. Farming reports. Trustees, the document administrator gave a very detailed report of our packets. We had zoning fire presented at the work session. That's fine.
Good evening, everybody. These numbers are for the month of August. Our overall crime compared to, every, all these numbers are compared to August of twenty twenty. But overall, our crime decreased nineteen percent, which was a drop of fifty-five calls for service. Our Part One violent crime remains same, no change there, zero percent. Part One property crimes were down twenty-eight percent, twenty-three call drop. And Part Two violent crimes were up forty percent, which was plus five. And Part Two property crimes were down, yeah, down forty-five percent, which was a fourteen now call for service drop over August twenty twenty. And our busiest areas were along US thirty-five and State Route corridors, the Joining Plots, most of that is either on the roadways there or the majority takes place back in my housing blocks and such. Community concerns, during the month of August, there was one new community concern reported about a rat infestation in the areas around Paltrum. There's rats were suspected of coming from wooded areas behind the homes, possibly a vacant house there. We checked due to some conditions there, heavy flies and things like that, but we found no evidence of rats or any problems in there. Environmental crimes did reach out to the burn control, the Dayton McGarney County Combined Health District, not to try to assist with the problem, but right now we don't have a status on what all they contributed. My understanding is it was made by Mr. McLaughlin and such, and that it has subsided the activity there pretty substantial. August third, twenty twenty-one, Second West Jefferson Cruz responded to the area of State Route four, an infirmant road on a two-car crash. Originally went out as a pedestrian down, but upon our arrival, it was apparent that it was a medical transport van versus a motorcycle. Van was southbound on Infirmant Road and failed to do a complete stop at the stop sign there. I believe that that was a four-way stop. Proceeded into the intersection where the motorcycle collided with the side of the van, which threw the motorcyclist and he sustained some, pretty substantial injury at the, at the scene. Care flight was called. He was lifted from the scene and later pronounced dead, mortified by the hospital. The driver of the other vehicle was taken to the Sycamore by ground medic. August sixth, twenty twenty-one, Second West Cruz responded to the forty-nine hundred block of Erickson on the report of a domestic, private arrival. That was upgraded to a shooting. Responding deputies located an adult female inside their residence and initiated CPR until relieved by med. A broadcast was made to adjacent jurisdiction of all the information we've gathered together pertaining to the potential suspect. The vehicle that he had left in was turned up rather quickly, still in the area. He had fled the vehicle, but a short time later did turn himself into law enforcement. He was taken into custody without any serious issue. That was presented to a grand jury and just because of some of the things involved. The interaction between the two, they did decline to prosecute, so there would be no charges coming out. I think it was already in the newspaper indicating such, but. On August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, we had the Hot Rod Power Tour that was held at the McGarney County Fairgrounds. The initial reports I heard were seven thousand plus vehicles that participated in that. We handled the public safety on the fairgrounds and we had no issue there. And we coordinated with ODOT, OSP, the Dayton Police Department to kind of handle the influx of traffic into the township. This kind of, this is kind of a traveling car show, so they all reported one place on day one and then kind of travel in a group, a semi-group, some of them can, some of them come back down the night before, some of them kind of take their own route, but the bulk of the traffic arrives at the same time in a group, so. We came up with a plan to just kind of patrol things on the roadway, keep traffic moving. I know we issued a few citations out of it coming down the connector, but no real issues. Traffic for the month of August, we had ten crashes, that's an increase of two over last year, plus twenty-five percent. We had five property damage, three minor injury, one serious injury, and of course the fatality that I just discussed a moment ago. One crash wasn't hit wrong and one crash did involve an impaired driver, suspected impaired driver. The busiest day for crashes was Sunday, it had a total of three. Tuesday and Thursday each had two crashes. Saturday had none, and fare patrol and fare to yield the right of way were the most frequent causative factors with three each. State Route four had the highest total with three. We made one arrest for impaired driving on Holt Road and a second arrest just outside the township by Farmer's Hill, West Carrollton Road. Deputies made sixty-two total traffic stops, they issued twenty-two citation, one seatbelt, three driving under suspension, eight moving citation, nine non-moving citations, and again the one OBI arrest. Environmental crimes, there were three dumping complaints for the month of August. The, one was a follow-up, a fourth one was a follow-up. The follow-up was deemed to be an issue with ball pickup, it was resolved. One of the others was an issue with renters, it was resolved by way of a nerve cleanup. And one was associated with a vacant ground property, it's not going to complain, so. It's a vacant home and we get squatters in there for time coming. Real quick on the traffic that I skipped over. We are partnering still with the Dayton Service Initiative, as everybody's seen that on the news, with OSP and Trumpwood PD and Dayton PD. So we are devoting hours to traffic enforcement throughout Montgomery County. We are trying to address the hotspot areas, high fatalities, high wrecks, injury crashes, things like that. The moving violations, the seatbelt reckless operations, those are the things that we're most interested in, so that continues. And they're, they're working on the schedule for October. That does come through Jefferson Township because forty-nine and thirty-five connectors are a part of that hotspot zone, especially leading out into, you know, the city or traffic that is inbound to the township from the city. So we're trying to address that. It's a, it's probably a nationwide issue coming out of pandemic, but it is for sure a statewide thing. They did a similar program up in the Springfield area, so we're just trying to utilize the same tactics down here to kind of get some of this crazy driving under control. I know we've all seen it because I've seen it out, you know, going to the grocery store and stuff myself. So that will continue through the month of October. Update on the Cruiser, we made contact with Ford, just to kind of find out where we're at on that Cruiser we ordered several months ago. At this point, we don't have a delivery date. It's likely that it's being built or has been built and is sitting somewhere waiting on the ship. But we're working, we're going to continue to work with them this week, try to see if we can firm up a delivery date for that. It's not, it's not just the one we ordered, Washington Township ordered some, Harrison Township ordered some, it's all the same thing. I think Harrison ordered Dodgers, so it's, you know, even multiple manufacturers. Monthly totals, six hundred and twelve total calls for service, a hundred and thirty-four reports generated, twenty-three arrests for forensic service, they had seven felony arrests, thirteen misdemeanor arrests, and then the, the sixty-two traffic stops. Rest of that's, you know, kind of on there, if you have any questions about it, just let me know. Thirty-two permit holder checks. I've got some information around the bottom for some of the numbers that you can call. If you guys are experiencing in your neighborhoods drug activity, whether it's in progress, not in progress, if it's an in-progress thing, call, call for a response, you want a car to come out for that. If it's not, two-two stop is where we receive our crime tips from. And those are routed to me, they're also routed to the Drug Task Force and everything, so we can take a look at that for things that are not in progress. Provide information, license plates, things like that. Drug, drug trafficking calls take a little time, you know, they involve a lot to make a prosecutable case. And so just keep providing those tips, don't get discouraged, if you have questions, call me. The illegal dumping, if you guys have seen illegal dumping in your neighborhoods, if you can get license plates safely, things like that, that's a two-two-five help call. You know, that will either be relayed to a deputy to respond if it's something that's in progress, or we will have one of the environmental crimes deputies respond on the, on the call in business day. But, you know, the more information you can get there, the more we can do with it to track it down and try to hold somebody responsible. Animal Resource Center, I put on there, they handle dogs. I'm going to tell you that right now they are operating in a tier two, which is specific criteria in order for Art to be able to do anything with the dog. Under that criteria, we're looking at, it creates a public safety hazard, you know, doggy traffic. You know, a dog that's semi-aggressive towards people where it is doing something. But we had, on the animal complaints, I don't know, twenty, twenty for this month and it goes up for September. So the animal complaints, and we have held dogs at District Seven on three different occasions now for multiple days. So we're having to water feed, shelter these animals until we can either find a rescue to come and get them or Art gets clear enough to where they can come out and make a response. And, you know, we've, we've about exceeded our kennel space. So it's going to be, it's going to continue to be a problem. It's going to continue to be a different response than what we're used to because the animal shelter has changed their criteria, so they're no longer a kill shelter. And that causes them to fill up, and when they fill up, it kind of triples out to us, so. You know, we'll do what we can, but it is going to be a difficult way while they're full, so. And that's all I have.
Thank you, man. I do have something I'll expand on. So on your report on the fatality, I'm expecting me, that's a sad, sad activity. But our Assistant Fire Chief, I'm going to be aware, he did call the state. There's two stop signs, one bound and half bound there, and he made the comment, it was in the report, that the driver, what happens if a four-way stop? You know, if you live here, you know it's not, you know that State Route four, the traffic doesn't stop. But if you're not from here, you don't know that. For, for the Assistant Fire Chief calling the state of Ohio, we give her word that we will have, under the stop sign, have signs, cross traffic does not stop on all of those stop signs. So maybe at least we can stop that from happening again. My hands up to the Fire Department for doing that.
And we have an excellent relationship with ODOT. The Sheriff's Office, law enforcement in this county, they're excellent to work with. And I even spoke to the director up at the, at their post up there on Oak. And we also requested in addition to what the Fire Department has asked for, we've asked for signage north and south of the intersection to indicate hidden, hidden roadway or something to that effect. Because the way you come down through there, with the church setting up high and the road down low, it obscures that sign, so. Something to let everybody know that, you know, there is an intersection ahead and it does not, you know, it, it, it's, you know, hidden and dangerous, so they don't, you know, they should stop, but be on order, so.
I have no question. You said drug tips info is not in progress, what did you say about this in progress?
So if you've got something that's in progress happening right in front of you on your street, you know, that's a call you're going to want to make to have a deputy respond. If it's something that is not, if it's something that is just information, general information that you want to pass on, not happening right now, you caught a, you caught a plate on your camera earlier today or something to that effect, we can take those tips at two-two stop and that way it gets routed to me directly, it gets routed to the task force and, you know, some of the other folks that may have been interested in that.
So what number, what number, if I'm watching, so I might do a drug, what number?
Uh, two-two-five, about four-three-five-seven.
Oh, hell, okay.
So unless it's somehow an emergency, then obviously you can take that and I move out.
Okay.
All right, threatening emergency.
Trustees, I've got two issues on the zoning report online. Justin brought this up in previous meetings, I'm working on a fund. The catalytic converters were stolen, and it's one was stolen off the Ranger. Either you've got objections to them in the shop or getting it there?
No, no question, but.
The bad guy's got our catalytic converter. The day after I saw a news story about it, I guess it's wiped out, but it needs to be fixed. It's probably going to be, if it's truly the exhaust and catalytic converter, you're probably looking at significant.
Yeah, I could change, what are you going to do?
You guys okay with moving it and fixing it?
Yeah.
What about parking that vehicle, I have that somewhere?
Well, we had moved over to the road garage and it's close to the camera there. If we bring it back here, I mean, we can park it closer to the cameras, but I talked to one of the officers and he thinks he knew he did it. Then I just tapped into Mr. Coens, who's in touch with the scrapping world out here, and he mentioned the same guy. So at least I'm hands off to the sheriffs for being aware of who the bad guys are. And apparently whoever did it was within a hundred yards of our parking lot. The other zoning issue is we've been getting, we got a written correspondence through the mail and there's been some email traffic that started Saturday from a group of residents on Soldier's Home, West Carrollton Road. They have complaints about a private shooting range. They are asking for FaceTime with trustees, and what that would mean is, are either of you willing to hold a public hearing? My suggestion would be to get all the neighbors involved, invited on both sides of the issue and allow them to then, now, our staff, both zoning administrators, the sheriff, the prosecutor, have weighed in on where legal standing is with this, and we have limited options to deal with that. But at the heart of their request, they're asking for changes in zoning and that, the law is very specific. That's not going to happen, we don't have an option there. We have no authority over prohibiting or controlling fire ranges, but we can hear out these residents and will at least hear what they have to say and give them a time in front of trustees, they're asking for this. I don't think they're going to be happy with a legal position on it, but they've notified all the state legislators. We've also been contacted back through the channels on this, so they have been aggressively contacting legislators. So are you in favor of public hearing? All right, I'll coordinate that through Justin's insistence of zoning issue and we'll notify the residents. At least it's hard to identify who they are in the mails, but I'll send them the line.
You know, meaning if you plan to have the Sheriff Department and legal appear, what that mean?
I believe Captain Flatt's on board with that, or how it runs, because he's got a lot of time invested.
I've not agreed in comment about it before.
There's a big paper trail on this issue, so whether or not the prosecutor's office will come in, but we'll try and figure it out. Okay. Uh, that's all I have for zoning. That takes us to comments by citizens. Will you address the trustees, please, if you need to name an address so that we can record that for the record? And you're limited to three minutes. Let's go ahead and start with Reverend Leroy Anthony.
Good evening, Trustee Man. Good evening, Jefferson Township's citizens. I'm Reverend Leroy Hines Anthony, I'm the pastor of the Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church. And I'm here along with Chairman of our NACI Board, Chairman of our Trustee Board, and several members from the community and including Mr. Nolan, who you all know very well. We appeared before this board a month ago and we were just talking about the possibility of acquiring some property that's near our church. And so after just considering what you all shared with us, we went back, talked about it, and we decided today we would just submit to you this official letter to say that we're serious about the inquiry. And that's what you had before you, I read that letter and I will be out of your way. It is addressed to Trustee McGuire, Trustee Mann, Trustee Dr. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees, Jefferson Township Administration. Dear Trustee McGuire, Mann, and McLaughlin, I am Reverend Leroy Hines Anthony and I'm writing on behalf of the Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church. Our organization is a faith-based religious organization that is committed to empowering humanity, strengthening families, and preserving our local community. At Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church, we are currently working on a project that aims to provide communal environment through an enhanced outdoor multipurpose recreational space for the church and community enjoyment. In order to make a difference, we rely on the support of generous members, individuals, and businesses in our community. We would be most grateful if Jefferson Township Administration would consider transferring ownership by donation of the property located at Norm Day Drive, commonly referred to as Blairwood Park, as it is directly adjacent to the property owned by the church. We stand ready to accept a property in its current condition, along with any maintenance equipment associated with its upkeep. And as longstanding members of this community since nineteen seventy-nine, you know the concern, commitment, and pride of care we hold for Jefferson Township. Your support is critical to our completion of our latest project, and we will gladly keep you updated regarding our progress, should you wish. You can contact me at nine three seven two six eight six six five one, extension three zero two, if you're able to support our efforts to make a difference in our community. Thank you so much for your kind consideration of our request, and we hope to hear from you soon. Sincerely, Reverend Leroy Hines Anthony. We are excited about the opportunity to help create a vibrant environment, a new environment, hopefully recreational environment for this entire community. I am new to the community, I've been pastoring Mount Carmel now for one hundred and eighteen days. But I'm originally from the city of Dayton, my wife is part of the race of Jefferson Township, that's on Old Road. And we're just excited about bringing some vibrancy to the outdoor community and connecting with all the things that are already here. So we hope you give us sincere consideration and thank you for hearing me.
Leonard Rowley.
Leonard Rowley, two four six South Ninemile. Um, I guess I'm a little disappointed. I've talked to the chief through the last two weeks, I've talked to Mr. Mann through the last two weeks, and Mr. Mann assured me that tonight we would have a signed contract and we would also have, he would have the paperwork ready for Mrs. Edwards to move forward on our new tanker. Again, I feel like the south end of town has been put off. And it really irks me because the three of you sitting right there bought that old glorified glass fire truck that we have, and to my understanding, there was no RFP done on it. There was no, there was no financial, well, you know, we got to wait more time, more time. We bought that in a heartbeat. But something that the voters voted to give you, to give us, you guys won't. So far, from what I've seen, you guys haven't done anything about it. You know, it's been two weeks, nothing's been done. Very, very frustrating from my point of view, from the citizen's point of view. Because there's no water, West Union Road. And it's just frustrating. I've been lied to yet again from, you know, I don't, if you're not going to do something, say. No, you're not going to get it, we're not going to do it, and that's the way it is. Stop leading the residents on that you're going to do something for us. Thank you.
Mary Perry. Five minutes.
Yeah, no. Okay, Mary Perry. Fifty-one forty off the road. Jefferson Township, on item four five four one seven. My major problem is a house at fifty ninety-nine and fifty ninety-one. One night I was walking my dog, because everybody says, oh, woofy dog down the street. Okay, everybody who has a car doesn't see what I see. Every street out here has pitbull, or something, cane corset, pitbull, whatever. I've walked every street with my dog, and I meant every, except for going over there, Oakland. But they all were there a long time ago. Nope, not going that way. Nothing's being done. One night I was walking my dog in a little Jack Russell dog, okay? People are bringing their dogs out here. When this pandemic started, people went to the animal shelter, adopted a dog. Now they're seeing how much they have to deal with the dog, so they're dogging them out here. Now, if you don't have to walk your dog, you don't care. I have to walk my dog, I need the exercise. This winter I'll be in the house, and you'll have to go outside, but you'll have to go in the backyard. There goes my exercise. That's problem one. Problem two, I was walking my dog in a circle and I heard a lovely neighbor that fifty ninety-one say this. Oh, I own this street, I own this block. I don't live to get them, they may, but nobody's doing anything to get them out. And one of my neighbors is so disgusted, she's talking about calling, let's see, Yokes or Sheriff Brown. Because she's just as disgusted as I am. Nothing's being done, and they're giving away with everything they do. Dumping dogs, making noise, and I mean, this summer, they had from sometime arrived there, pay TV, we should be out in the country. They had time to ride their little mop pens, should be out in the country. Now, sometimes, let me explain something. Most of the people on my street are not street chickens, we want their sleep, that's all that matters. That's it.
Sheila Black, 1700, I don't know, 45417, I'm a resident. On 9/15/21, I emailed the trustees about the ODOT stimulus grant, which the deadline to file is November the 19th. This grant will help us with our roads, and I wanted to find out, is there an update? Because I did not see anything on the agenda, and I wasn't here last week. So I wanted to find out, what is the update on that? Are we applying for that?
All I know is Wolfman, under the Help Us With Road projects, there was a meeting held. I don't know the outcome. Supposedly they're going to recommend streets where we might be able to win some money, but that's as far as I know.
Okay. If there's anything that the trustees need me to do to help out, to try to get this grant, I am willing to assist, because our roads are just, our road sidewalks are slowly falling apart. And we really, these are funds that could help us to pay for these issues. I also wanted to, I spoke with, I wanted to find out, for the chocolate training event on the 30th of October, would the road department be giving out candy like they did last year?
I don't know, I didn't.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is I was wondering if our neighborhood association would be able to, last year we were there. Trustee McGlaughlin actually gave out candy, so I was wondering if we would be able to utilize that again this year, to pass out candy. Now, I do know that St. Peters, which is a couple of houses down, is going to do a bonfire and some other things, so we just wanted to try to make it like a safe place where the kids could come and do that on that street so that we can give out candy. And so is there anyone I need to contact to find out if we could use the road department building?
I have no problem taking responsibility to that, unlocking it, staying in there during the event and locking it back up for the event, so if you two agree with that, I would give that.
My issue is there can't be any campaigning on township property.
This is, this has nothing to do with my campaign. It has everything to do with the Neighborhood Association. I'm aware that you cannot mix the two, so I'm not doing any campaigning.
I mean, with what I'm seeing online, Sheila, it's very hard to separate NHGT from your campaign, so.
Mr. McGuire, this has nothing to do with my campaign. I am a citizen, and I am trying to get some things done out here in Jefferson Township.